Recording in progress.
I'd like to call the meeting to an end if you could stand for the pledge, please. Can I ask on your roll call?
Yes, I am.
The Board of Education approved the agenda for the December 5th, 2022 regular Board of Education meeting. Can I motion, please? Tanya first, Shelley second. All in favor? Opposed? Passes six to zero. Moving on to item four, the appointment and oath of office. Result of the appointment of Denise Falso will be an order as a newly selected board member to serve on the Board of Education of Balden's Central School District, with a term of office from December 5th, 2022, until the annual election in May, 2023. This appointment is to replace former Board of Education member Frank Mattis. Can I motion, please?
Move.
Tanya first, Wayne second. Any questions or discussion?
Yes, I have something I'd like to say. In the past, the process of the Board of Education to fill vacancies has been to solicit interested Balden'sville residents who meet requirements to submit letters or resumes to the district for consideration for appointment to the Board of Education. This process ensures the opportunity for all to be included and considered. Yes, this process may take time, and yes, the Board is busy with work that needs our attention. Never knowing what issues we will face as a board, the discussion to appoint should a new board member should follow precedent. With that being said, our Board needs to work together to benefit all students. Thank you.
Anything else? I haven't been around a long time to know if there's any precedence there, or if there's different ways of doing it. I just go by what the law says, and there's different options for us. And it was put out there, if anyone would like to take that, they could, but we decided that this was the way we were going to go.
It's something that should be done together as a board, not one person.
So can you elaborate about just by one person?
The work that we do in this room for the district should be done as a board.
So are you saying that it wasn't done by the Board as a board last week? Or the week before?
I said all that I have to say.
Yeah, thanks to your comment. Can you just help me just a little? I know you said you've said everything that you had to say, but you just said we should work together as a board and not one. And I'm really trying to understand even the timing of the question, where she just asked if one person came up, or can you help me?
I don't feel like I need to explain my opinion. I feel that the process that has done, that we have followed, that Boards have followed, wasn't done this time, for whatever reason. The work in selecting or appointing a new board member isn't up to one person spearheading the process. It's for all of us to do it together to appoint a new member of the Board.
So I'm trying to figure out who the one person was, because when we left the last board meeting, I believe it was that we had a majority to go, one of the two options.
In that time, I'm just saying, for me, I prefer this process.
Okay. So what you're saying is?
I'm not, I said what I, this is what I said.
Okay, but you just put out there that one board member spearheaded.
No, I didn't say one board member. I said, one board member should not spearhead the process. We should be doing this together.
And the option was there at the last board meeting?
Yes, it was.
Does anyone else have anything else, any other comments?
Yeah, I think just, and just upon reflection, I think there will be instances where approaches to how we address issues, we sometimes will not always be on the same page. And I think it's, you know, that level of disagreement, although at times uncomfortable, is okay. So I appreciate your feedback, Sam. I just, once again, I think there were options that were presented in the space, and there were some strong views about it. There were some windows of opportunity that were closed because of the shortened timeline, because decisions weren't made as a board, so, you know, just wanted to put that out there in the space.
I think that we didn't really have a chance to, or we hadn't discussed it, you know, what our plan was, we knew what the options were. And then last week, it was kind of like, we wanted to make a decision when we didn't really have like a full discussion on it, I think. From my point of view, a little bit as well. But after we had the discussion in the meeting, you know, I came to the consensus that what we're doing is, you know, a fair way to appoint the seat. But I think the fact that we never really had like a deep discussion about what we wanted to do and what our plan was, I think, I mean, because I was a little taken aback last week too. We were like, okay, so are we going to do this tonight? And I was like, well, you know what I mean? But then I clarified, yes.
Right, and actually, I went back and listened to that entire segment after that last meeting, because the question was, which you circled back with, you know, are we voting on the person or the process? And it was the process.
Right.
Right, they got, you know, a lot of the comments got everyone confused as to what we're voting on. So no, we weren't voting on the person, it was the process last time. And then you guys gave me the direction to go through that process.
So yeah, at least that's my take out of where there may have been some miscommunication or something, where we weren't necessarily all on the same page as to, you know, what we were going to do going forward. So that's, I just wanted to say that.
Does anyone else have any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
No.
So that is five, one. Five, one, so Denise Falso. Think that is your seat. You'll be taking Mr. Mattis's seat, and we appreciate you doing this for us on a basis until May, till the next election. And it definitely helps the Board out, because you've been here before and there's a lot going on in communication. And honestly, you know, I'm going to see if you're going to do the oath. Oh, she won't get it yet. Denise, did you bring your laptop or no? Okay, okay, because she won't be able to log in till after, she has to get from her desktop here.
I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Member of the Board of Education according to the best of my ability.
Your laptop, are you just going to go and light the screen? Okay, I just want to welcome you back to the board table. You were a huge asset in the past, and you know the time commitment that goes into it. And your leveling engagement is definitely what's needed right now. And I appreciate you willing to help us out until May, till the next election. Welcome. Moving on to the next part of the agenda is the Board of Education Spotlight. So Mr. DeBarbury will take this part of the board meeting.
On behalf of the Board of Education and District Leadership, we're very excited this evening to recognize some of our student athletes for outstanding achievement this past fall. We're going to first start with recognizing Boys Cross Country. Tonight here, we have Solomon Holden Betts, a senior who won the New York State Public High School Athletic Association Cross Country Championships. He had the best overall time of the event. He's coached by Katie Dolan as the head coach, and Megan Titus is the assistant coach. So while Solomon's working his way up, I also want to point out, before we do a photo, that he also qualified for the Nike National Event, which was held this past weekend. My understanding is that he played in Portland, Oregon, right? And he placed eighty-second out of the field. So when you think about that, eighty-second out of all of the student athletes who run cross-country in the nation, the best of the best, that is certainly quite the accomplishment. I know that I will not be running against him. So congratulations, Solomon. Next, we have Girls' Varsity Tennis. I know Coach Maestri is in the audience, so he can come on up as well. The Girls' Varsity Tennis players, Hannah Gould, a senior, and Elena Nesbit, a freshman, won the Section III Championship for Doubles and competed in the New York State Public High School Athletic Association Girls' Tennis Championships. Also, we want to recognize Myra, is Myra right?
Mira.
Mira? I knew I was going to screw that up, I apologize. Mira Nasden, a Girls' Varsity Tennis player who is an eighth grader. She also competed in the New York State Public High School Athletic Association Girls' Tennis Championships for Singles. So congratulations to Mira, Hannah, and Elena. And again, similar comment, I will not be playing tennis against anybody anytime soon, so congratulations.
I caught it when there was multiples.
Nice job.
Thank you.
For Girls Swimming, Eva Smith won the sectional champ, she was a sectional champion in the hundred-yard backstroke and the two-hundred-yard freestyle. Eva also placed first in the state qualifiers in both of these events. She competed in the New York State Public High School Athletic Association Girls Swimming Championships. She is coached by Jennifer Dom as the head coach and Jessica Bowles as the assistant coach. And I will not swim against Eva as well. Eva, come on up, congratulations. Last, but certainly not least, we are recognizing senior girls lacrosse player Carly Desamone, who earned a spot on the U-18 USA Select Team, which competed in October. The USA team won the Brogdon Cup. So congratulations to Carly, come on up. Yes, that's all of them, so congratulations again to all of our student athletes and coaches for representing Balden'sville in the way that we like, so thank you very much.
Congratulations, everyone, thank you. Okay, next up on the agenda, we have Correspondence Board Activities and Committee Reports. And on December 1st, there's a Board of Education building visit to Palmer Elementary School, which a number of board members are able to attend.
I was able to attend the tour last week with Alex Ewing and some of the other board members. Again, another great opportunity to see the kids and the teachers and staff all together. We were there on Thursday, and Mr. Ewing does, and I forget the name of it, but he goes in, students from each class are selected for the week, and then he gives, reads out to announce what they did, whether it was a positive thing, academic thing, and then they are, then have lunch with Mr. Ewing on Friday. So to see the excitement in the kids' face trying to figure out if it's them, the children, was just really a highlight, and I remember that from last year too. A lot of good things going on over there, a lot of kids were outside, they were there in the afternoon. Yeah, it was cold. But yeah, just great to be back in the building and seeing all the kids doing what they're doing, and the teachers as well. So thank you for the opportunity.
Yeah, he does that, winds it with the positivity project, character trait. And it is watching their faces, trying to guess who it is, is a lot of fun. But, you know, being in that building, one of the cool things is, you know, just Alex's energy and his ability, knows all the kids' names, walking in the hallway, walking in the classroom. I mean, something to say, knows more than just their names, something about them as well to share, which is cool. You know, just going to a couple of classes, how eager the students were to answer questions and tell us what they were doing was really, really nice to see, just, you know, the ability to speak to strangers who are like, who are all these people walking in and being able to, you know, share out was really nice to see as well.
So just to echo that, the positivity and the communication between staff and students was fantastic. Just to hear that some of the changes that they had made in regards to reorganizing, you know, where rooms were going to be placed, and how that has benefited them. Also to see some of the construction that was new since the last time I was there. And just to see how the music department makes the best out of the situation they're in with the small amount of space and how creative they are and, you know, reaching their goals, so it was really encouraging to see.
Self-love and saw the hugs, which is real nice. Very, very nice. Next up, does anyone else want to say about that visit? Next up, we had the Policy Committee meeting, and we did have one policy that is ready to go for first reading, but because there's only one, we will hold off to see that first reading until two meetings from now. And, well, actually, probably longer than that, whenever, after the first meeting, after our next policy meeting. There's some lengthy policies that we're reviewing right now. We did talk about, one, going back to legal for some help to separate the social, the social media part of it. It was embedded into a policy that had to do with computer, district computer systems. We talked about the Code of Conduct policy, a lot of good questions and conversation about that. Was there another one, Shelley? We said the grading one, was there another one that we covered?
We reported one that to the attorneys, and then just are holding out on the second one.
The Code of Conduct. And then we talked, we had the Curriculum Department here, Tony Renee, Danielle, to talk to us about the grading policy, that section of policy seventy-two-ten. It was a great conversation about what's going on, you know, just shifting, you know, the mindset, how, what's the purpose of grading? Help me out here, anyone? A lot of it is just, you know, what's happening with the state. You know, the state has all these different designations for the regions, or for the types of diploma, which is obviously great, focused on region's exams, but, you know, are students learning by just kind of memorizing for a test? And the shift that we're waiting to see hopefully from the state, how that's going to trickle down here.
And I think the other thing that was emphasized was the importance of the district to establish a policy that encompasses the philosophy about supporting students, you know, through the policies rather, and then having, you know, a building, a district leader, with, you know, teachers and students to explore what that would be at the building level. So, you know, that was also a great conversation, so thank you again for that.
Did anyone attend any other school events that they'd like to share out tonight? Okay, there's a bunch of upcoming meetings and events that people can read on their own, and we still have the Budget Advisory Committee meetings going on that are listed for the next two as well. So moving on to the next section, Izana is going to give us the Student Board Report, and you already told me there's a lot of stuff.
So at the, well, I've had the opportunity to get in contact with several, well, all of the administrators at the different elementarys, and then Ray and John. I think Ms. Morgan just emailed me back from Ray, so I'm going to throw her in there as well, Ray in there as well. But yeah, it's only a lot because there's a lot of schools, and they're doing a lot of stuff. So just to start off, Baker, there was eight students who went to Area Allstate in Rochester this past week, or did various music groups, whether at the orchestra, band, or chorus, being friends with several of them, and like witnessing music throughout the past, like, thirteen years here. I know it's always like a stressful thing, but it's also like a huge accomplishment, especially this year of being like seniors. I don't know, that's just what's exciting for them. I've been talking about the BFO fundraiser that we've been doing at Baker the last like month now. That closed last week, and they raised a whopping three thousand one hundred and fifty dollars, which is huge. I know like the first place class was Mrs. Ed's class, which comes as no surprise, because, and even though Mrs. Eden, it's Mrs. Heaton, but her class raised like a thousand dollars, like alone, that's like twenty kids. I don't know, that's, that's big. So that's exciting. I talked at the last meeting about the student council planning a semi-formal. Semi-formal was on Saturday, there was like five hundred kids or something that went to semi-formal. That's a lot of kids. I heard that that was also pretty exciting, and I think, I could be wrong, but I think that was the first dance that sophomores and juniors were able to attend. So that was definitely exciting for them, talking the one that I did. Winter sports are officially definitely in session. Hockey has started, I know hockey is one of the bigger, as far as the student section is concerned, one of the bigger events for them. And talking to the kids about the game last week, I think, so that was exciting. Holiday concerts are also coming up, Baker's Holiday Concert for the, for the music programs is this week. Okay. All of the administrators responded with a lot. So I'm going to try to like, I want them all to get the attention that they deserve, but like, I don't, you know? Okay, so starting off with McNamara. Ms. Helmeyer talked, McNamara, okay, that's the elementary school that I went to, and it's also like interesting to see how things have changed. Like, for example, she said that they held their books and basketball event. I don't ever remember doing that, but I can only imagine it was fun. The way it was described to me is that it was put on by the staff and the school, and students, families, and teachers all played in English Language Arts Games. And then at the end, there was a staff-beharing basketball game. I can only imagine for elementary students, that was quite a bit of fun. I also remember when I was there, we did, I think it was in third grade, they did like culture fests, and this kind of reminded me of that. They said that there's going to be doing like Hanukkah, Kwanzaa, and then Christmas. They're going to do like celebrations supporting one another's difference and so on and so forth. I think that's good. Beyond Ted Eldon, Mr. Conklin said that, I think they also did this in the last meeting, but they raised hundreds of non-perishable foods, those were all donated to the fall into a food pantry. Their concert is tomorrow at six-thirty. Palmer has their winter concert tonight, so. A hundred and fifty of their students, I think when Eldon was here, they talked about, or Palmer was here, they talked about, is it even, I don't remember, it doesn't matter. After-school enrichment activities, I thought this was going to be all over there, this is a lot of information. Ms. Cronin at Van Buren, they're also similarly doing donations. So there was fifty generally-used winter coats donated to the rescue mission, and they were also collecting non-perishable foods. There were four students at Van Buren that are moving on to the regional written spelling bee. I remember the spelling bee being an interesting thing, because none of them are the best at spelling, but I think good for them. With Reynolds, they had a lot. Like, I think one of the most, like, the most exciting things to me was like, I guess they did a third-grade Macy's Thanksgiving Day break, so it was a STEM-based activity that the entire school got to watch, and the kids got to make like their dreams, they had like their own mock Broadway parade. Their student council was also collecting items for a snowman soup activity for active-duty soldiers. Every level will donate requested item and fill a stocking for a soldier. Moving on to Durgi, there were four hundred and fifty-two students in high honor roll, which is in line to do a hundred average, that's a lot of kids. And then there were a hundred and twenty-eighth that achieved honor roll, which is an eighty-five to eighty-nine. They also have a ninth grade dance coming up, or they have an eighth and ninth grade dance coming up on December ninth. And then Ms. Morgan, like I said, just emailed me, what she included was that the Ray Student Council collected fifteen hundred items to the Balden'sville Food Pantry. And she says, "We couldn't have done it without the support of our Ray families." So, it's all over the place that was. Lots of good stuff, yeah.
And that was very comprehensive, thank you. Appreciate it.
Can I just add something?
Sure.
After going to a couple of the school visits, I feel like with the lost and founds at each of the schools, they're going to like triple the numbers of the things that have been donated, because every place we go back to, there's been racks and racks of hats and jackets and bags and water bottles and everything else you can think of that the kids forget, so I'm trying to remember that stuff.
Anything else? All right, next up on the agenda is public participation, do you have any requests to speak?
No, we do not.
Moving on to consent agenda. The Board of Education approved the consent agenda pursuant to attach, can I motion, please?
Move.
Shelley first, Jeff second. Any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Passes eight, zero. Next up on the agenda is a leadership report, so Mr. DeBarbury?
So we're actually going to switch the order here, just because I see a couple of teaching staff here. So we're going to start with the school counseling update. Carrie Lamachia?
Good evening, everybody, can you hear me okay? We're here on behalf of this, and behalf of all the support staff of Balden'sville School District. It's our pleasure to be able to present to you tonight the annual update and information regarding the evolving comprehensive school counseling program or plan. You know, it's over a sixty-page document overall, so it does entail a lot. So we'll try to keep it to some key points tonight. The plan is on our website, so if you're ever interested in a lengthy read, that's there for you. Tonight, we'll be presenting key components of the program plan and where we are with implementation of the New York State recommended components and outcomes. I have S E L coach Jen Wilkin here tonight, and elementary school counselor Brooke Fingland. This is her second year with us. Mrs. Wilkin has led the way with the S E L component, and Ms. Fingland with developing the career curriculum piece at the elementary level. Their leadership has been very helpful, and there are many, many moving parts to this overall plan, and they really have played an integral role. So it's really important for them to be here tonight to speak to some of those pieces. You know, just again, to kind of always be able to speak to the fact that everything that we do, you know, goes along with the board goals and the strategic plan. Everything we do and discuss aligns with those strategic goals. Every aspect and component of the program targets that educational excellence, high levels of learning for all, promotion of collaboration, of flexibility to prepare students for the future. This is obviously to ensure that we're meeting the district mission, but also aligns with the school counseling program mission, which is to cultivate personal growth and self-advocacy and respect for others, develop awareness of personal strengths and how they relate to career college readiness, and ensure acquisition of skills that make them, make our students world-ready. So because we have some new members on the board, and you know, like I said, this is an evolving plan, goes back, you know, quite a few years when New York State made some, you know, mandates and updates for regulations. We thought it was important to just do a little bit of background and foundation for some of those who may not have heard this before. But overall, the program aligns to the NICE guidelines and the American School Counselors Association Mindsets and Behaviors for Success, K-12 college and career readiness standards. The literature, the literature that's out there recognizes that knowledge and academic skills are only part of the equation for student success, and school performance is such a complex phenomenon shaped by many, many factors. No one knows this better than our support staff, who are responsible for the delivery of these programs and supports. The overall program or plan that we have encompasses the three components that are regulated or recommended by NICE, which involve the academic piece K through twelve, career development K-12, and then a personal social development K-12. As you know, the mental wellness committee, which you've heard a lot, when I was here a couple of weeks ago, we talked a lot about that, serves as the New York State Recommended Advisory Committee, as it includes multiple stakeholders and meets various times annually. And in addition, if you recall, last year, we added a subcommittee, which is comprised of support staff from the elementary and secondary level. It includes leadership from each building, elementary, secondary, school counselors, social workers and psychologists, because each has a very specific goal of carrying out the plan and aligning to those three components. So we meet regularly, we try to meet four times a year and then over the summer to kind of do the program analysis and just make sure we're hitting all of the components, and also updating the plan with any new pieces, which you'll hear about some of those tonight, and making sure that they are transparent and included in our plan. So to kind of go through the academic development piece, which is, you just heard is one component, this is the first component, we won't spend too much time on this tonight, as you've already heard a great deal of detailed information on the side at each, from each building as they've presented their strategic plans. Really, this is the curriculum and the courses we offer, the academic side. Where support staff is key here are with the supplemental pieces to this component to ensure the overall success of students with the curriculum and the courses that they take. So they can include things in our plan such as sophomore seminar, open houses, participation in conferences, parent meetings, team meetings, five oh four plan, CSE meetings, academic planning, college admissions, testing, application process, and transition planning. So those are just some of the key pieces. Last year, you may recall that using the New York State Recommended Program Assessment, which is something we use to guide us and identify any gaps we might have, we had identified a gap that included access to a certified counselor K-five. So we didn't meet that, you know, that gap that we had when we hired Brooke, but she was split across five buildings. She's got most of that, she's developing curriculum all by herself. Tried to help the best I can, but I'm not an expert career development. So she did a lot of that work, and she implemented it across every grade level in all five buildings. And so as you know, as of last week, we now have a full-time counselor in every building, so thank you for that. So we're just really working on moving forward with now how do we, what does that curriculum look like as we move forward? Obviously, we want our new counselors to get their feet wet and build relationships and meet the staff and students first, but that's obviously a quick goal that we have next. And really, NICE, when I had reached out to them when the plan first came out, you know, I kind of asked for a little bit of guidance, being new in the role myself at the time. What's, you know, I want to make sure that we respect the role of the school psychologist, the counselor, the social worker. They each, they have a lot of things that they do that overlap, but they're all also very important for very specific reasons. So at the time, we had social workers and psychologists at our elementary buildings, whereas at our secondary levels, we had all three. And I had kind of asked, you know, what will you see as being the most important thing of, you know, hiring those counselors besides the career development piece? And they explained it as, you know, a school counselor would be more of a tier-one support. So if they're, if they're there to do your tier-one programming, you have your social worker to provide those tier-two and three interventions and deal with your students that are at risk with that, you know, more clinical mental health piece. And your school psychologists obviously spend a lot of time in the CSE world doing evaluations. So that's kind of the key. So we have met that gap now. We also had identified a gap in communication and perception of the program as well as in implementation. For example, at the time, we knew that students in grade six through twelve already had access to a certified counselor in every building, because we have those counselors there assigned to each, you know, student by the alphabet, and they meet with those students. But the perception, when we had a survey completed, eighty percent had, had indicated that they didn't necessarily think that was the case. So because we knew that it was, that wasn't necessarily accurate, and that was a communication or perception, that was why we, we decided that people probably weren't spending the time to read the sixty-page plan that we had put together, so we created one-pagers and sort of a grid that was a little bit easier to read with just the bullet points. And each building website now has one on their page. So when we talk a little bit about moving forward, we'll talk about some of the things we want to fine-tune with that. So you've heard most of these three, three components, the academic, social and career pieces, embedded throughout the strategic plans that have been presented, presented to you. But in thinking about what to present tonight, we thought it was really important for you to hear more in regard to the career development piece and the social emotional components. You know, because there's just been so much work done on those two realms this past year. So Brooke is going to talk about the career curriculum.
So with the career curriculum being introduced last year for the first time, I had the opportunity to start from a blank slate. So to get started, I referenced the three New York State C-DOT standards for career education at elementary level. And I divided the grades into two separate bands with K first and second focused on career exposure and three, four, five focused on career exploration. So my goal for last year was to support the different standards through meaningful and fun lessons for, for the kids. And I discovered very quickly that students of all ages are very enthusiastic and love sharing what they want to be when they grow up. So that helped out a lot of our lesson plans with those conversations getting started. So for the career exposure lessons, for the younger students, that was really good to just give them a very broad introduction to the different careers that are out there and to give them an opportunity to share what careers they know and learn about ones that maybe they didn't. So a few of the activities that we did last year, we used the alphabet to learn about different careers. So we made an alphabet chain and came up with different careers for each letter. Students made their own career crowns, which they were very proud of, you can see in that middle picture there. We learned about community helpers and the important roles that they play in our community, and we talked about ways that we all can be good community helpers at home and at school. And students also participated in a career treasure chest activity where they would pull out a different item and decide what career they best think that it, it went with, like the step school, for example. The career exploration lessons for third, fourth and fifth, those are really designed to delve deeper into how students can use their personality traits, skills, things they're interested in, and relate them to different career paths that they might be interested in. So for third grade, we learned about different skills that are needed for different careers, and we did this through Career Bingo, which was a very popular game for them to play. Fourth and fifth graders went even deeper, and we did career interest inventories. We did career cluster interest inventories. Students learned about multiple intelligences and all the different kinds of ways that we can be smart. And our fifth graders actually learned about the Holland Code work personality. So they did an assessment and were able to discover what kind of work personality they had. So the point was to help them, you know, see the relevance between these different parts of who they are and how that can help them with their career exploration down, down the road. So in total, last year, a hundred and sixty-nine classroom lessons were given. So I was able to get the chance to go into all, in the elementary classes and meet all of the teachers who are just wonderful human beings, they work so hard. A very important message that I wanted to stress to the older students in particular is that there's no one right path to take. Everyone's path is going to look different, and that's okay. We discovered our differences through the different inventories and activities that we did. So not everyone is going to go to college, and that's okay. Some people might go right to the workforce after graduation, some might enlist in the military, some might take on a union apprenticeship. So all of these different paths are going, you know, to be right for the student, and we want them to be happy and successful and fulfilled in what they ultimately do. So with the addition of four more counselors, thank you again for that. I'm really excited for the five of us to have an opportunity to collaborate and only make our career curriculum bigger and better moving forward. And ultimately, the hope is that our students, when they leave elementary school, will have a solid foundation of career exploration and exposure when they move on to middle school.
I'm now going to talk about the updates to the school counseling plan under personal social development. Most of the updates in our plan come from an infographic, which I'm sure you've all seen by now. This infographic is what we call key pieces to our school culture. The Learning Coach Administrators use this often when talking about district and building priorities. If we are doing these four things, we're creating a welcoming and inclusive environment where all students feel connection and a sense of belonging. As far as explicit S E L instruction goes, we continue to expand the use of second step in grades K through five. Originally, we had our social workers pushing into classes to make sure we're hitting prioritized standards following in-depth crosswalk of the New York State mental health standards. However, the, the feedback from the teachers have been so positive that we're really trying to push these lessons and help teach explicit S E L skills in classrooms beyond the previous lessons that the social workers or school counselors now teach. This summer, a teacher committee was created, and together, we are working for the ongoing implementation in classrooms in addition to these prioritized lessons. Grow the Green meetings are starting to happen in buildings. As you remember from last year, this is a protocol where we look at our BIMAS data, and we grow the green, melt the yellow, stop the spread of the red. Grade levels have identified areas we want to work on, and several of the interventions discussed so far have entered into more second step lessons, use community circles, and readjust small counseling groups being pulled by our school workers and our new school counselors. An exciting thing happening at Ray has been the creation of targeted S E L lessons based on BIMAS data. A small team of teachers have been working extremely hard to create quality S E L lessons hitting the different competencies. We have two advisement periods a month where we focus on these lessons and skills building-wide. The feedback so far has been really positive from both teachers and students. Students look forward to these advisement periods that come up every two Wednesdays a month. We also continue to focus on restorative practices as a district, which is reflecting our school counseling plan. We have partnered with OCM Bosse's, and a team of teachers in every building have been trained and able to support staff in their buildings that they work in. Restorative practices is another way for us to create welcoming and inclusive environments in classes where all students have an equal voice. Another update to our plan also includes handling our students with trauma and different abilities. Last year, social workers and myself attended a therapeutic crisis intervention for schools, or TCIS, turnkey training. And we are currently in the process of training our staff with this model. We ran our first training this fall, and the feedback was very receptive and positive. And we look forward to continuing this training this summer when we just have more time to pull staff out of the classroom. So as you can see, we've been really busy in this area, and it's truly something we look forward to continuing the momentum with this work focusing on these key pieces of school culture.
So in looking forward, in, in response to some of the questions I have gotten these on the slides, this is different from the bullet on Brooke's slide where she had kind of said, this is where we're going with the career development piece. This is where we're looking forward or headed with the overall plan, so back to those kind of three components. We're going to continue, you know, obviously with the BIMAS, which is really big with our S E L component. You know, not just, as you've heard last week or in the executive summary, for, you know, individual student safety planning and triaging students in need of emergency services, but also looking at a building as a whole. So we have several years under our belts with the BIMAs at the elementary level. And you've heard about the Green the Grove Protocol, where we've been really effective at getting those red areas, so stop the spread of the red, you heard Jenna say, into that five to seven percent, which is a more typical range. At the secondary level, we have two years of data where we're looking at self-management and self-awareness as, you know, in the twentieth, and the percentile range is a little bit higher than we would like to see it. Our, you know, grad components in the twenty, twentieth percent. So that's definitely higher than we wanted to see it, but again, this is only our second year. So one of the things that we're really focused on, and I know Baker's doing a great job, they have a lot of, well, psychologists up there, many years of working with data teams at the elementary level, and the administrative leadership up there, working to start data teams, which is really huge as far as being able to just look at that data regularly and develop targeted interventions at a tier-one level to target those two areas. So I think one of the questions too, that I had been posting, one of the emails I got from the slides was in regard to the, you know, longitudinal data, I'm looking at the elementary versus the secondary. And it is really interesting, because what we know is that the elementary data historically has shown those areas that were at risk that we targeted were in externalizing behaviors. So recall that elementary is a teacher rating. Once they hit seventh grade, it's a self-rating. And what we're finding to be more at risk at the secondary level are internalizing problems. So there's not, it's not really aligning. Now, I will say to that, we only have two years of the self-rating data following COVID. So we're continuing to want to implement that and look at those patterns to see is that something that is going to be consistent over the next few years? Is that part of sort of a reaction to, you know, what we know is kind of going on with our students and just people in general right now with some internalizing things sort of coming out of the pandemic? So definitely things that we want to keep an eye on. I think a lot of this overlaps with the mental wellness committee and some of the things that we want to do to bring like mental health first, eighteen to teen program and some things, some ideas we have to target those areas that are at risk. But again, lots of work to do there as we move forward. Obviously, continue with the career development piece. We have PLC's, Elementary School Counselors, where we're really using, trying to use that time monthly to take the curriculum, you know, Brooke has developed, and work with our new counselors to hit the ground running, keep those lessons going, and then also expand upon them now that we have one counselor in every building. And talking with the elementary building principals, hopefully in the future, do some more community event-type things where we're bringing in parents and community members and really kind of working as a community to develop that career exploration piece. And, you know, then on top of everything else, New York State put out some revised S E L standards November fourteenth that they would like us to take a look at. So that's kind of a next on our agenda, to take a look at the, the recommended standards that relate to diversity and equity and inclusion, which again, thankfully, we're doing a lot of with the, you know, restorative practices and our equity-focused leadership. So I think we have all the pieces, it's really just kind of. It's really just kind of as a committee taking a look at where we're hitting those things in our plan and where we need to maybe add some things and move forward. So I know that was a lot. Do you have any questions for me or Jenna or Brooke?
I just want to say thank you to, I mean, it's a lot of work to develop the curriculum, but it's also kind of nice to have, start that with a completely completely make it your own and then adapt from there. I think, you know, one of the things that I heard you say was how exciting it is for the kids to figure out what they may want to do and starting that so early. It's a lot of kids, I think, don't know other than what their parents or closest relatives do. And we see a lot of kids getting into certain things that their parents do, exposing them to a variety, things so early to get them thinking is fantastic.
Thank you for answering my questions.
Have you gotten any feedback from the families about their career development program?
I received, sorry, I received positive feedback from a lot of the parents actually who worked within the schools that I was in. So they would have children in different classes, and they would, you know, stop in the hall and comment on, you know, certain lessons that we did. So hopefully that will just continue on. And again, with each, really has its own counselor, that'll really help the curriculum grow.
Other questions? Thank you, Carrie, Jenna, and Brooke. So we will now transition to curriculum instruction, accountability, assessment, and technology. So Tony, Renee, Danielle, and RJ will make their way up.
Good evening again. So we're taking a few steps of curriculum instruction. For the first one, such a rare day, I feel we've been talking about this timeline forever. It's finally coming to an end. So this year will be the first year officially that math in the LA state assessments of three through eight are aligned to the next gen standards. Teachers have been preparing for this for quite a while. Way before the state was doing their rollout, which is amazing. But I feel like we're in a good place with that. Science, so where that is, we'll both talk about that a little bit separately, is this year for elementary, there won't be a state assessment. So there's no fourth grade science assessment. Eighth grade will have their science assessment still to the kind of core, you know, build standards. Next year, the elementary assessment moves to fifth grade, and the eighth grade assessment stays in eighth grade, but will be aligned to the new standards. The big change that's happening with the science is with the science investigations. State was very slow in getting out this information, even though they had an extra year to prepare for it. And they finally released at the end of June, I think, the names of what the assessments that these investigations are going to be. And some of the materials you could go by now if you want, but you couldn't see the investigations. And they didn't release the investigations for anyone to look at until just about a month ago. So basically, what this is, is, and it's a good change, just wish the rollout was better, is that, if you remember the old, I'll talk about the fourth grade. For the fourth grade assessment, there was a day of, however, they would shut down, you'd do some experiments. You're a fourth grade kid, you went through stations, you did these experiments. They were packed away in a box later and put in the closet. And then next year, you know, the new fourth graders take the same ones. It just went like that. And then there was a second day that had the pen and paper test. So the change is, number one, the science assessments are all going to go online, just like math and the LA. So in fifth grade, there'll be a one day in May, I'm assuming, of an online written assessment. Same thing for eighth grade. What goes away is this one day of these experiments. Instead, what they created is four investigations, and they've aligned them to the standards. And then each district was allowed to decide, do we just wait until fifth grade to give all four of these? Or do we give them during the year that these standards are being learned? Fifteen percent of what they're experiencing is going to be part of that written assessment in fifth grade, part of that written assessment in eighth grade. It's not going to say, remember in third grade when you did this? It's really about the concept. So we look at the investigations and map them out where they take place best. So for my level, so we sort of skip down to the elementary at the same time. At the elementary level, there's going to be two that take place in third grade, one that takes place in fourth grade, and one that takes place in fifth grade. But because of the way the rollout's happening, where next year, the fifth grade, those fifth graders are going to be taking this for the first time, which means the current fourth graders is that group. So they missed those third grade, they never experienced it. So this year, the current third grade will do the two investigations. The current fourth grade will do the fourth grade investigation plus one of the third grade. Next year, when they go to fifth grade, they'll do the fifth grade investigation and then the other third grade. It's not a great solution. We called the state to have a discussion with them, you know, if they rethink about this rollout, and they wouldn't listen to us about it. But we think we've come up with a fair solution to at least have them prepare for it. So right now, the teachers have had the investigations, so they can start going through and looking at it at the elementary level because we're generalists. We are going to have some representatives from each grade, from each building, go to Bosse's for a day for some more in-depth training, come back together. Luckily, our, two of our learning coaches will be supporting them in that one. One of the interesting pieces ours is that we have to keep the student, there's nothing secure. So if a kid comes home with something, don't worry. There's no, these aren't secure like the old times. But the answer happens, that the kid's complete, and you must keep on file until five months after they take the fifth grade assessment. At Renee's level, until five months or six months after they take the eighth grade assessment. So I guess in case you get others or those kind of things. That's, it's one of the bigger things happening, I would say, right now. In addition to that, I listed down decodable readers, K two and the science of reading. So I would say if you're in the world development, carried all over the student kid age, or if you like, put it down, rabbit holes on Facebook or anything. Science of reading is already there, rightfully so. So that's a topic we could do a whole other board meeting on. Really what that's about is, you know, they would say, you learn better, you do better. So I was taught, soliterity specialist, how to teach reading and what we know now because of brain research, really two different things. So we've been making, I think, good strides for many years in the district because of things like the foundations program that we use in K three, which is phonics-based, and bringing in the integrity phonetic awareness program. So the science of reading will tell you, you have to use these, there is a scientific approach teaching reading. And I went through my grant program, it was more holistic, okay? And we know better now. Part of that is decodable readers. And so again, when I taught reading, it was very common to have a child at my kindergarten, first grade, second grade level having a book saying, the ball is blue, the ball is green, the ball is yellow. And obviously, the color of the ball is changing on each page. So if you memorize really well, you're going to figure out what to do. Where decodable reader is about eighty-five percent decodable based on your phonics programs. We purchase decodable books that are aligned to our foundations programs. So students go through foundations lesson. All students will then work with the teacher through these decodable books to practice what they've learned. And even though, you know, I think the old thought was, well, you know, she's a really good reader, why am I putting her in this decodable book? Because what the research and science is saying is that she's good right now. And all of a sudden, third grade happens, and all of a sudden, those pictures are going away, and the text is becoming more complex. And if we haven't really talked about, with her, about phonics and how language works, that's the issue. So even though she might present as a good reader in a kindergarten, first grade room, we know they need this structured way of teaching reading. So that's where we are in that. More things planned for the summers when you come talk about, summer lessons, things to talk about. We completed our math review, our math audit. We had Bosse's come in and meet with some teachers. This was a K six project. You know, we haven't looked at our math program since the modules came out twelve years ago, something of that nature. So it was a really good experience, a meeting with the math curriculum committee this Thursday, to look over, to see where do we go to from here. The gist of what the audit said is that teachers really felt they themselves, again, remember, were generals at elementary. They were better teachers of mathematics because of teaching the modules. It really was a tough, I remember as a principal, teachers coming back from training like in tears, literally, because this was such a different way of teaching math. But over time, teachers and students, their scores pre-COVID really show that we do a pretty good job with math. But we need to look at our materials. So that's the discussion we're going to be talking about with the curriculum committees. Do we pilot some new materials? What about manipulatives, those kind of things? And then obviously, we can get our assessments. As you know, we've had a great year, rolling out nine sections of UPK, going really well. I commend those teachers, like, was a kindergarten teacher, but boy, that was a lot easier than what I see going on in pre-k. Those kids are adorable. So that's been a really huge success, I think I have to say. And then the science investigations is what we've talked about. So those are the high points at elementary.
Okay, so the science investigations for the middle level, because they're banded, grades six, seven, and eight. So there is a science investigation at sixth grade, and there will be several at seventh grade, too. But because we also have seventh accelerated science, my question to the state was, the students who are on the accelerated pathway, do they need to do all of the science investigations? Because typically, those students would track right into living environment and never take the eighth grade assessment for science. So the state has not gotten back to me on that question. And then there is one that's going to sit in eighth grade. And the reason why they're spread out like that is because of, is what Tony kind of mentioned, is how we've set up all of our performance expectations over that grade band. That is a local decision. So that's how it currently looks. At the secondary level, I don't think it's as, not that there isn't going to be work for our teachers, but because they are science teachers, this is like, we're going to do a lab. So this is, you know, right in their wheelhouse. So that's where that piece is. Seal by literacy and seal of civic readiness. Seal by literacy, we're in our seventh year. We have thirty-five students in currently at the program. I hope we can keep all thirty-five going throughout. We have Spanish, French, and German being represented this year. Latin is not because we have graduated, we graduated our Latin students, and now we're, of course, rebuilding our program. So we'll have some students hopefully participating next year. And we will be visited by the state education department this year for seal of by literacy. Baldwinsville has been selected for a site visit for our student presentations, and they will be going to the, I believe it's going to be at OCC this year. It's typically done at OCC. So they'll visit us there, and they will follow our students and as they do their presentations and provide us feedback so that we can help improve our program for seal by literacy. Our seal of civic readiness, we have our first crop of students. We have twelve students who have submitted their applications to participate in the seal of civic readiness. This is our first year as a district going through this program. We have three advisors, and the first meeting for those students will be coming up next week. I've been working closely with Danielle. She is building, what would you call it, a data dump to, okay? In the official, that's a very official word, into, to help us keep track of student points because it's pretty hefty tracking of points, and kids can earn points as early as seventh grade. But this is our first year, and only students who are seniors graduating can get the seal. So we're really just focusing on those kids this year, and then we'll be backtracking as we get the program up and running. And I believe all of you have seen the seal of civic readiness handbook in one of your Friday letters that we put together. And that is also going to be, there's a few pieces on that that we're still working on, identifying the electives that students can use because there is a process that I need to sit with each teacher who teaches our electives to see if it fits the criteria of the state in order for that to count as an elective that students would be able to use. So that's a work in progress. The next thing on the list is the world language transition. We are another year out because we do not offer world language in seventh grade. We start in eighth grade. You're going to see most districts who have a seventh grade program will start the transition this coming September. But because we don't, we have an extra year, and we will have the new standards in twenty-four, twenty-five, grade eight. We've been working towards that. And one of the things that we're going to be piloting this year are the Apple exams in our world language classrooms. The Apple exams are aligned to the ACTFEL standards, which are the national standards for world language, and that's what the New York State standards are based off of. So we're going to pilot those assessments this year to see how our students do that. Eventually, the state exam that our students will have to take will be aligned to those ACTFEL standards, hence our New York State standards. So we're going to, we're going to start that process. Next on the list is computer science and digital fluency standards. So for us, this year in September twenty-twenty-three, we have to have all credit-bearing computer science courses aligned to those standards. So I've already reached out to staff who teach those courses, and we will be doing some after-school work and probably some summer work, depending on the teacher's availability, to work on those alignment pieces with our credit-bearing computer science courses. The following year, all of those standards must be aligned to K twelve, and therefore, all content areas. So that's going to be quite a lift for us in the curriculum department about how we integrate those standards across content areas.
And last but not least, obviously, last board meeting, you were all approving or all approved the new courses that we have on tap. So a couple of these, interestingly, in the Syracuse dot com tonight, they were talking about the difficulty of binding lifeguards for the city of Syracuse. And so I think it's very timely that we're offering this course because that is definitely a need. So we're going to be meeting specifically about that to make sure we have everything up and running. And again, the drone course, we're meeting on that this week to make sure that we have the training and the supplies ordered so that that course will be up and running. So that's what's new at the seven-twelve level.
As far as district-wide, Jenna had talked about the restorative practices already, the work that each of the buildings are doing on that. And then culturally responsive teaching practices. So we've had four of our schools this semester, coaches from Dr. Holly's. Business, I'm not sure, that's from Dr. Holly. They've come and worked directly with teachers in four of our buildings. In between that, our coaches have offered what's called a binder study. So it's really work of Dr. Holly around restorative practices. And any staff members can come to that, not just the old lead coach. You know, getting delving deeper and, you know, you know, they've been through a book study, or they, you know, he's come, he did the superintendent's conference day a year ago. Now it's really like boiling up its sleeves, and what does this look like in the classroom? So that's some of the work going on district-wide.
Okay. So welcome to RJ's World of a Thousand Spinning Plates. I kind of categorized them like this because, you know, I've got to hurt the cat somehow. So under changes and upgrades and improvements, some of the highlights, you know, every year, we upgrade and update. So under changes and upgrades and improvements, some of the highlights, you know, every year we upgrade and update twenty-five percent of our fleet of everything. But this year, we didn't get our Chromebooks in until late, late, late in the summer. I think school actually started. So thankfully, I was able to keep a temporary worker on to keep enrolling those Chromebooks. She's getting through the twelve hundred of them and we're in the middle of changing those out and giving the kids that should have got a new one, a new one as we go along. I think the big, the biggest project, and I really have to thank Joe and Kim, was getting three hundred and fifty-plus ClearTouch boards done all at once. Anybody that's been on the technology committee with me knows I've been sweating for years of how am I going to get all those smart boards changed out before I retire? And luckily, this year, we were able to do that with their help and got them all done, so I'm good for ten years. So I'm going to be able to problem ten years from now. I really thank you for your help in getting that done because it was a big undertaking. We are trying something new in our K-one classrooms. Not really, I'm not happy with iPad performance. It's a source of frustration for my department and the teachers. Sometimes they work great, sometimes they don't work at all. So we've been looking at a Chrome tablet, which looks a lot like an iPad. Comes with a keyboard, but you can take the keyboard off and now it's a tablet. And the kids can just take their little badges and log into it like it's a Chromebook and get to the programs that the teachers have identified to you for curriculum support. And they work flawlessly. They're just, they're just so easy to manage. So we're piloting that in a couple of classrooms in kindergarten right now. And if I get good feedback, which I don't, I've already got good feedback, we're probably going to transition out of K-one iPads and go into a Chromebook, which is really the platform that the kids are going to be using as soon as they enter grade anyway. So kind of good preparation for that. So that's a, that's a in-the-works kind of a thing right now. There are many, again, thanks to Kim and Tiffany and Joe, we've got a lot of upgrades happening. And it's funny, I go into a space that's a media spacer, has a lot of technology, and they say, you know, we really need that. I'm like, I just did that. And then I look and it was ten years ago that I did it. So there's a lot of these spaces in Baker, the libraries, the different media classes, technology classes that needed upgrades. And I've got a lot of them underway right now. When I come back in April, I'll try to bring some pictures to show you the spaces that we've upgraded. I know a lot of you stopped into the Ray, Ray Library and that one was like the most wow right now. But we've got a lot of things happening in Baker, in the theater, in the film area of the, of the library. Some things going on down in the technology classes, there's things going on. Almost every building is getting some kind of upgrade in a space where they need presentation equipment. So that's kind of a big overall of the upgrades and improvements. As far as training, this, you know, we start off in the summer with our new hires and we, we get them trained up on how to use some of the technology, most of the technology safely. So that goes well. We have a virtual learning bootcamp over the summer. We have continuous safety training. There's a, there's a safety training that we all have to take. But then every month, twice a month, I send out bulletins and reminders of how to stay safe using the technology. The coaches helped me out a lot by how, teaching the teachers how to use the technology in the classroom. So I've got all the instructional coaches out there doing a great job helping me do that, as well as the library specialist. And we have ongoing communication with the staff. They'll tell me when they, when they need something and we're able to respond either through my department or through the instructional coaches on how to get people to use what they need to use correctly. The data privacy and ed law two D. So I'm continuing to constantly tweak and develop response plans to incidences so that we have documentation and guidelines to go by, God forbid if something happens like that. And I do a lot of work through Bosie's. We're, we're a member of the data privacy and security co-ser. And we meet every month and, you know, it's a big group of us and we talk about things that we see coming down the pipe that we really need to stay on top of. And, and we go through scenarios and how to get through those. It's really been, it's really been a positive addition to the, to the offerings that Bosie's puts out. We're also a member of the, it's called MSISEC. It's the multi-state information security analysis center. It's part of the Homeland Security Department. And we've got things in place through them that are kind of giving us reports on what's going on coming our way from the outside. And I'm not going to go into detail, but we're a member of that. It's been very, very enlightening and I'm glad, I'm glad there's, part of the federal government that's out there to help the, the schools. Continuing to get, you know, all these ed law two D contracts for privacy with our third-party vendors. Some of them don't want to do it unless we purchase their paid versions. We've just actually had to just, just continue, you know, using the product, which, you know, we find something, we find another one that works just as well and that we can get a contract with. So that's a constant, that's a constant value there. Some of the ongoing challenges, just, well, managing, you know, sixty-three hundred Chromebooks is a, is a full-time job. My help desk operator, Linda, is busy, busy, busy because there's every day, some coming in that need repairing and some coming out to get the buildings that have been repaired. So keeping on top of that. Bosie's has done a better job at getting, turning around repairs for Chromebooks. I'm a lot happier with that. We're continuing to try to make the bandwidth, you know, accessible and reliable. The private side of our network seems to be running really well. It's, the challenge is the guest, guest network. And, you know, the difference between a public school and like a college with a guest network is, you know, when you're in college, they don't care about filtering what you're looking at or like that. But even on our guest network, we have to maintain a filter and that's always a challenge. So we're constantly working on that. We're also looking at the feasibility of trying to increase the cell coverage in the, in the buildings. And we're studying that now. It's, it's a pretty expensive proposition, but there may be areas that we can, you know, beef up to cell coverage in, you know, in critical areas of the buildings. So we're looking into that. And multi-factor authentication is just going to keep, keep coming. So right now, we're covered as far as, you know, our Google accounts, you have to have your two F A to do that. But I can see where it's going to be coming through school tool and all the other programs that we use. So we're staying on top of that. There you go. Questions?
Good evening, everyone. As far as updates with academic services and accountability as it relates to our district's data management and analysis work, state and federal reporting require ongoing review and monitoring throughout the entire school year. One of our newest and most exciting opportunities, as Tony mentioned, was being able to offer our universal pre-K program to our four-year-olds. This year, we've been fortunate enough to receive additional federal and state funding where we increased from fifty-eight UPK seats to a hundred ninety-seven pre-K seats, both in district and through our community partnership with Head Start. So after the new year, being the January new year, we'll start looking at what does our twenty-three, twenty-four UPK program look like in terms of in-district seats, community partners who might be interested beyond Head Start and continuing to plan for that. Another example would be our title funding, whether it's title one, two, or four. We support our RTI program, our learning coaches, professional development, as well as some components of social emotional learning through that funding stream. And then lastly, our team supports work related to school improvement. We know that the state education department releases accountability designations based on state testing in grades three through eight, regents testing, graduation rates, and chronic absenteeism. Just last week, the state education department released our state assessment and regents assessment scores on the state school report card website. So it's, it's very early for that to come out. I was actually looking at future board meetings. It's not till March or April that we usually give that report. But the data is publicly available specific to three through a testing and regents testing. I anticipate more continuing to be added as time goes on. But having that posted, I also wanted to mention that we anticipate receiving our preliminary accountability designations sometime by the end of December. So I will also remind us that one new update to the state's accountability restart is that schools who in the past have been identified as schools in good standing will now be identified as local support and improvement. So an LSI designation signifying that school improvement is, is ongoing. Everybody can continue to do better on a daily basis. So we will no longer see that school in good standing designation. In addition to the accountability measures required at the federal and state level, our curriculum and instruction office monitors and reports out on our district's strategic goals. So similarly, looking at those three-grade assessments, those regents exams, looking at our district's universal screening assessments, so AIMS Web Plus, STAR, and BIMES, which we heard a lot about BIMES tonight from our school counseling team, using those as ways to measure and monitor student progress, obviously in addition to course scores, in addition to looking at attendance, discipline, and equity as well. Putting all of that together, really just working as a team, working with our building staff, using the data to best implement multi-tiered systems of support, whether it's academics, attendance, behavioral supports, and interventions that our teams are putting in place daily. So I know that many of you have heard from our building leadership teams about that during our strategic plan presentations, but I wanted to bring it all together with that. So I look forward to continuing to work with the board. I know that we have an upcoming data workshop once we head into the new year. But as a reminder, our interactive report card can be accessed anytime through our district's website. And currently, it houses all of our information up to the first quarter of this school year. So we'll certainly take any questions that any of you have for us.
Tony, just a question about the reading, the science reading. You were talking about the decodable and you said when you went to do your grad program, it was more of a holistic. Without getting too personal here, I don't, I'm afraid to ask you like how long ago that was, but what was it before the holistic? Was it the decodable as well before that?
So they were level books and I'm talking, you know, that's almost thirty years ago. So we still have level books. So I think confusion out there is level boxing and, you know, it could be a whole issue in itself and what makes something a level book. But to use a level book, which is all I had at the time, to use a level book with a student who's just learning to read is doing a disservice because it's not a controlled text. Controlled text in my day was seriously like a Dick and Jane book. It wasn't the best either. So what's come out through the science of reading is to say, we knew this, but didn't know it was explicit. I would say that an explicit phonics program is needed for a student at a K-one, two level. You have to have an explicit phonics program, which we have through third grade. But to go with it, students have to practice what they're learning. And a level book isn't leveled to your phonics program, but a decodable book, okay, is. So we happened to purchase, in fact, the teachers have their, they input what they wanted. But GEO, which is the name of a book, is leveled directly to the foundations program. So it tells, teachers know when they, certain books can be used. You're done with this lesson in first grade. Here's a book, you know, that you would use and they're very engaging. Kindergarten teachers went with a book called Flyleaf. Decodable book, that's fine. We took it, the learning coach at your school, they took the Flyleaf books and rearranged the order that Flyleaf gave them to go with our foundations. So it doesn't really matter, there's no sequence to the stories, but there is a sequence to what's in those decodable books. So we, you know, they, they may have said, we Flyleaf used this book in the first week, but we haven't taught that phonics though. So she rearranged it to align to foundations. And that's what the science of reading says, is that you have to, it doesn't matter which phonics program you use. And now because science of reading is out there, everyone's selling their stuff. So it doesn't matter which really phonics program you use or which decodable you use, as long as they match.
So how long have we shifted to that?
This is our, we've been using foundations, I would say, a good eight years now. But we just purchased the decodables this year.
So this is the first time I'm putting it all together?
Putting it all together, really, actually. And I will give teachers a credit because they've been searching and finding because they've known all along. And we would look at decodables, I would say, a few years ago, but they, they just weren't the best quality. Well, the manufacturers have finally gotten better with it to the publishers, I should say. So it was the best time.
I know you'd be interested to see what that change, you know, where the students go.
RJ? Thanks, Matt. You mentioned the Ray Library. I just wanted to tell you that I've heard rave reviews for weeks.
Oh, good.
At home, so it was very exciting.
Oh, good.
Danielle, I wanted to tell you, I'm very excited to be a part of that data retreat because I know how much you, or how hard you worked on that interactive report card last year. So I'm very excited about that. So thank you for all your work on that.
Thank you.
I have a question about the science.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm very curious to hear how, do you have a plan on how you'll keep track of students' completion of those lab? Like especially for students that are moving into the district, like during their eighth grade year?
Great question. So the first question was when we were all together at Bosie's was to say, okay, I teach fifth grade and a student comes in from North Syracuse. So that part's pretty easy. Hence why we, the state monitors, keep these on file. Part of what Mary Moira does, getting records in from other districts, we're going to add now, either they have to confirm or they actually send us the investigation. So if the child, the student comes in fifth grade from, let's just say, North Syracuse, and as Renee was sharing, it's a district decision how to do, when to get these investigations. Most are going, almost in the direction we're going when we said at Bosie's. But let's just say, North Syracuse was going to give them all in fifth grade. So here comes this kid in the fifth grade at Collinsville, he's never done the third or fourth grade. We're going to have to have them participate in those layouts per se. So whether they're doing third grade class when they get it and just, you know, for those that get, they're not very long at elementary. The mystery in this, I'll share you the state's answer, is well, what happens when a student comes from Florida? You know, what do we do? And their answer to us and to Bosie specifically was, well, yeah, yeah, just give us a call and we'll, we'll have to think about that. And they said, like, you know, the gentleman Chris Kees from Bosie's who was at the meeting said, we know this is going to happen. They're like, well, we're going to have to think that one through. So on our end, we're going to have to keep track basically the way we sort of described and get it from the sending school. And if it's from out of state, we're going to call the state at that point and say, what do you think? And I would venture to guess they're going to say, do your best attempt of having them take it. The good part is it's only fifteen percent of their, you know, their assessment.
Okay, so my last question is, so budgets are already through and supplies, you know, teachers get a certain amount to order. So these lab investigations came out with a whole list on some of them for supplies. So does that impact the teacher's budget or do you have somewhere else to get that from?
Yeah, Joe. So we've already, we have, it's a truthful answer. Bosie's is helping the supply side, just got an answer today from Bosie, then jumped in the supply. The rest, we're going, Eric Segler, our learning coaches, that would help develop shopping lists per se of what we need so we can get those supplies for teachers. And then going forward, and the principals know this, any consumable parts, they need just some water, okay? As always, they would always go into the building budget going forward.
So will they, so will teachers, will teachers be able to increase their budget then?
So most of those, because at the elementary level, other than specific supplies that teachers are requesting, a lot of it, if it's like district-wide, we have a budget for core curriculum supplies and equipment. So it would be come out of, it would be coming out of that because we'd essentially be ordering the product and the materials for all of the buildings so that there's at least that consistency. So we will kind of coordinate that, just like we do right now with the Smithsonian units at the middle school level and then Project Leadaway, science that is being at the middle school level and then Project Leadaway, science that is being taught in the elementary schools. So we'll make sure that they have with the, and this year, you know, obviously, that's why we build a fund balance into the budget so that when things like this change, we have the ability to make those purchases.
Renee, you mentioned, um, about the, the world language and, and not being offered in seventh grade and being offered in eighth and other schools, uh, offering it in seventh. And I know this has been, all right, let me preface, there's not a well-defined, well-developed question here. So I'm, I'm, I'm not expecting a response or an answer.
And you will not get a well-developed answer on that.
So, so it's just me thinking out loud, right? And I know it's been, uh, other discussions and part of the facilities committee discussions in terms of our grade configurations and, and challenges that provide, provide their proposals, I guess. Um, and I don't know if I'm making an assumption that our building, our grade configuration might be a challenge to offering world language in seventh grade. Um, so, uh, like, I, I got some confirmation there. So, um, I guess, I guess just my, my thought is, you know, part of the discussion and part of kind of what, how integrated this is in terms of our, our strategic planning and in terms of our infrastructure. Um, so, and that's peripheral to, to what you prepared in your presentation and that. But, um, you know, making sure that curriculum and instruction is part of our discussion in terms of our long-term infrastructure plan. So I guess that's it, there's no real question there.
So I don't really have to answer that. Would it, would it be great to have world language in seventh grade?
Absolutely. I think it would be great to have that first year over the, the, the course of which typically it's done is seventh and eighth grade. And, um, would it facilitate that if the seventh grade was in the same building as eighth grade? Absolutely.
Is that the only reason why it's, it's not offered? And what will it take to, to get it?
Um, well, I, I can say that just like every other content area, trying to find a certified world language teacher is like trying to find the needle in a haystack, right? So I think that's part of the issue is just, there just aren't people to hire. But, um, I think, you know, most of our world language teachers, uh, some of them are teaching like six, um, six classes. And then you have to add in the travel to that, it's, it's, you know, it becomes a contractual issue.
We would have to add a fair amount of instructional staff in order to meet that, that shift and change. Not that it's not doable, um, but certainly that's consideration, given all of the departments and it really, what becomes the priority as a district. So if it becomes a district priority, then certainly the level of, um, where that request falls on the overall budget, uh, development process is adjusted.
Yeah, from what I, what I understand, that, that challenge isn't just in terms of world languages, it's in terms of other opportunities for secondary students as well as that.
Yeah, the foreign language, that's been being kept around since 2018 because that was one of the goals in the 2018-19 school year. You know, then we came back in 2019, you know, and it just kind of died, I guess, the only way to put it. So it definitely would be nice because, you know, talking to foreign language teachers from other schools, they do spread that first course for checkpoint A over seventh and eighth grade. And the belief is that they have that longer amount of time to build that foundational vocabulary. It would help them when they get to the upper grades. But yeah, I agree to, with Matt's, you know, point. You know, that was a question that I was asked at our retreat years ago, um, back in 2019. You know, having, you know, what is the program plan like? Shouldn't we kind of have an idea of that before we're talking about the funding the future? And, you know, getting that plan, that curriculum plan last fall, you know, kind of helped. But, you know, there are other factors that we have a look at as well. But no, I have a question actually, since we're on this, um, SEAL by literacy has been around for seven or eight years now, said.
It's our seventh year.
Okay, and we're up to thirty-five students. Does that number fluctuate? Do you see more?
Absolutely. Typically, I see, uh, in the thirties at this time of the year. And then, uh, those numbers will fall because students, uh, for a variety of reasons just get overwhelmed because they have to do presentations in world language and in English. Um, some of our students who, uh, usually the students who want to do triliteracy, triliteracy or more than that, um, are the ones that I know are going to finish because they're passionate about their languages. Uh, sometimes for our kids, just, you know, they, they're also doing, um, at least out of the, uh, twelve SEAL civic readiness students, at least ten of those kids are also doing SEAL by literacy. It's a lot of work and I, I think when they get into it and the reality sets in, they start to have to prioritize about what am I really going to be able to do and finish. So, you know, the advisors are there to support the students, but sometimes you just can't keep them in for a variety of reasons.
Do you see the starting numbers going up at all or is it then about thirty per year that start?
It typically runs around the, the thirty. Um, you know, if you remember the first year that we did this, I had, I think I had seven students sign up and three actually finished. So, um, last year, I believe we had fifteen, last year was a very small year, um, I think numbers-wise. I think we were in the mid twenties and we, we ended up with fifteen, uh, fifteen or sixteen that finished.
Okay, why don't you do that, because that's when we get to the SEAL, the readiness, you can go with that one.
Yeah, just as a follow-up on the SEAL by literacy, and this is probably more of a reminder. When do they have to commit to that? Is that only a senior year thing or do they have to commit earlier in their high school career? And then they end up at their senior?
So they can start working on it, um, you know, anytime that they're in their world language program in terms of building a portfolio that demonstrates proficiency, but that again is a shift in these world language standards that we're, we're going to be experiencing. Typically, we have not looked at student achievement or student progress in terms of proficiency. Can they speak the language, right? We've, we've really had a traditional, um, world language program that has been more focused on grammar and things that are easy to grade and say, yep, you know your grammar. But then, you know, kids get to the end of the program, they can't speak. So in terms of our students, they start to build that portfolio of work at any point, but the SEAL can't be awarded, um, to students unless they're graduating senior. They have to have a regents exam, um, uh, graduation, uh, behind them in order to get the SEAL. We had, uh, one, one year we had a junior who was graduating early, who was able to get the SEAL because they were essentially graduating, um, as a senior in their junior year.
If going to the curriculum nights or the, um, world languages with my two students, our two sons, um, just how teaching has changed and how we've moved away from exactly what you're saying that they're like looking for, that'd be more conversational in the classroom, which I think is very, very engaging, it's just not that repetitive, just. Which would be interesting to see if you get more enrollment in that over the years. What I find really impressive of what you're saying is the number of students are actually trying to do both. Because that handbook that you, um, created that was in the Friday Letter was so comprehensive and I think it was really exciting to see if they could start that in the middle school years with these capstone projects and stuff. I mean, what an experience, this seems so comprehensive, it's a great opportunity for our students.
Yeah, sure.
Any other questions for the team? Thank you, Danielle, RJ, Renee, and Tony. So I'm going to transition real quickly. This is, I know we did you this update and this looked a lot as, you know, as a stat by the end of the week. Uh, just as a reminder regarding understanding the McKinney-Bento Act. As you can see here, um, how New York State and federal law defines homeless children in youth. I will make a point later on in this quick presentation that, you know, we try to refrain from using the word homeless. It really is temporary, temporarily housed or a temporary living situation to, um, prevent, uh, individuals from feeling marginalized because of the situation that they're in, out of, not their control. Um, so how we define this is any student who lacks a fixed, regular, adequate nighttime residence. Uh, the McKinney-Bento liaison for the district is Mary Moyer. I serve as the school district residency representative, so I make the determination, um, residency and status of, uh, whether a student qualifies for McKinney-Bento. Mary is there as the advocate for, uh, the student and/or, uh, the family. Here are some examples of, uh, what services are provided to students under the McKinney-Bento Act. Um, so if a, if a student is residing with relatives, family, others due to loss of housing or kind of hardship, you can read through the examples, living in a shelter. Um, sometimes students are placed based on social services, either direct placement or placement in a respite location. Any unaccompanied youth, not with their physical, um, in physical custody of a, of a parent or, or guardian. So we use that information to make a determination. I think that this quote, I share this every year because I think it summarizes really what our role and responsibility is for, uh, working with students that are in that temporary housing, uh, situation. We have to keep in mind that there's a lot of stress and trauma that is a result of that unstable housing and administrators and teachers and leaders. We have to recognize the role that we play in making sure that we have that positive school climate and, uh, safe, supportive, uh, trauma-free environment for students who happen to fall in these situations. The, the big goal of the McKinney-Bento Act is to help students maintain their educational stability. So there are a lot of options, uh, that are available to families that fall within this, uh, situation, mainly being that, um, they have the right to reside, stay in the district of where they, they were initially placed. So if they, for some reason, lose their, um, housing and they're temporarily housed in a different district than our district, um, they have provisions that allow for transportation services. So we work sometimes with our transportation department to get, um, busing for those students and/or we work with, uh, the neighboring districts to, um, help share that responsibility. Because we're all struggling, obviously, with transportation and the hiring of, of drivers. So these are some of the provisions, that's the, the most significant. And I think I share this every year, you know, because of the quality of the services and supports that we provide our students for the district, we have a lot of students that, um, you know, if they were a resident of this district and they are temporarily housed in another district, they want to stay here even if it's creates significant travel time each morning for students to go back and forth. And it might be more convenient, uh, for longer periods of time to, um, receive instruction from the school that they're currently residing in, as opposed to, um, students that are from another district and then they get temporarily, temporarily placed here in our district, they end up also transitioning. So it's, it's kind of a, a good problem to have and I think it speaks volumes regarding the types of supports and services that we have for students in this, in this district. Just to give you a breakdown of some of the numbers, we have a, currently, as of, I believe, November twenty-eighth is when we finalize this report, we have a total of thirty-six students that are qualifying under McKinney-Bento. We have fourteen students that, um, entered this school year. And you'll see that, you know, fourteen this school year, so thirty-six from fourteen, or fourteen from thirty-six. We're at, uh, twenty-two students that are still in the same situation of being temporarily housed from the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. There's your, uh, students who are temporarily housed outside of the district, so we're currently transporting or working with transportation. Uh, sometimes families, if they have the ability and it's more convenient, we do work in the, we've brought to the board, um, agreements for mileage, so they're getting paid mileage at the IRS rate in order to get their kids to and from school. Sometimes that helps out families, it's that little extra, um, bonus, um, given their situation, assuming that the cost of wear and tear on vehicles is not necessarily at the rate of the, the federal standard. Interestingly, uh, this data is actually an increase in the total number from the twenty, um, twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Twenty-one, twenty-two school year, if you go back to that report, we had, I believe it was twenty-four students. Uh, so we've seen it, twenty-four students, from what I reported last time this year. Which, interestingly, if you look at this chart from New York State, I don't know if you had a chance to look at it in the board docs prior to the meeting, it actually shows, and I wouldn't have predicted this, that there was actually a decrease in the number of students who qualify, um, under McKinney-Bento and as it been designated as, um, living in a temporarily, temporarily housed or temporary living situation, even during the, through the COVID pandemic. Um, we are still awaiting data from twenty-one, twenty-two, so they're a little bit behind. But you'll see that downward trend, which I find quite interesting, given the fact that our data actually shows and tells a different story, a story where we have an increased number. So we're eager to see what the state data will be updated, hopefully soon, so that we can share that, see if our, our data is consistent with maybe the, a now and upward swing on, on the state end. Part of the responsibilities with McKinney-Bento is to make sure that principals, teachers, social workers, counselors, everyone knows, uh, some of the signs and symptoms, uh, that would identify a student as needing additional support. Here are some examples of what we look at or look for and advise, uh, staff to be mindful of. Another way that we're able to determine and identify eligibility is when, uh, students enroll in the district, they're all required, we're required to have students complete, families complete a housing questionnaire. So based on how they respond to that questionnaire, we make determinations of whether they would need further dialogue and conversation about, um, qualifying for McKinney-Bento. Additionally, anytime during the school year when there's a change of address form completed, uh, Mary Morton, who also serves as a data manager, gets a, uh, copy of that form and certainly follows up. And I will say one thing Mary is very good at is, um, that investigation piece. She certainly is there to advocate and support, uh, families. And she is on top of making sure that our data is, um, ultimately clean and, and up to date. So any form that comes through, she is on it as well as Kristen in, in registration. So we obviously have an obligation to inform families of the rights. Mary does, does that, um, on a regular basis. You'll see, what we also have a responsibility to do is to make sure that we're maintaining the enrollment that they want. So if it's in this district, great, if it's in another district, we'll be happy to support. We also, you know, ensure that there's the free meals and, and the transportation. There's my example of using encouraging language temporarily, temporarily housed as opposed to homeless or in a shelter. One of the things that I think we do a great job of and things to carry in the counseling staff and social workers is really looking at the supports and training that they're providing teachers when you think about SEL. So how does trauma sensitivity get embedded within our SEL lessons and trainings that we conduct with staff? The other piece that's also important regarding this, I know RJ talked a little bit about ed-la two D, but this is protected under FERPA and that because we have but this is protected under FERPA and that because we have, um, educational contacts, we can share this information with staff. We try to certainly be discreet and staff are aware of the fact that there is confidentiality that they have to maintain. But it's important to note that there is the ability to share with teaching staff and support staff to make sure that they are, um, students are getting the support, social, emotional, and academic, uh, support that they need. There is also additional resources listed here, so we encourage families, uh, to utilize those resources. Counselors refer to these websites. This New York State Teach is great. They provide, um, ongoing professional development and training for staff every year. And I believe this is part of, uh, one of our board policies. Mary does go through a training as the McKenna Bento liaison to make sure that she is up to date and current with, um, all of the supports that are needed to be communicated to families. Any questions from me regarding the McKenna Bento Act? Again, we'll get this out to staff so that they also can refresh this down as information.
Did you leave the last one?
Yep. It didn't, next, I will double check that. Thank you. And we'll update it in the board docs. The last, uh, piece that I just want to mention, it wasn't on the agenda, but I feel it, it's timely and it will be likely communicated in the Friday communication to families. Um, I'm not sure if you saw from SED today, uh, there was a joint memo that was sent from the New York State Department of Health and the State Education Department, Dr. Bassett and then Dr. Rosa regarding common sense precautions that should be communicated to families and, and students regarding the prevention of the spread of respiratory viruses. Um, so there, and it was in the onboard e-blast that went out to school board members and leaders today. So what we're in the process of doing is updating a quick little note in the Friday communication, just reminding, you know, proper hygiene and things like that because this is the time of year. Obviously with flu and, um, sickness that, you know, we don't want to find ourselves back in same situation that we were a few years ago. And I'm not saying that it's going that way. I think a positive step is the fact that the state and the health department have listed this is recommended. Um, and I think it, some of these things are healthy reminders. One being staying up to date on vaccines, including the flu and COVID-19. Washing hands often with soap, hot water for at least twenty seconds. Not coughing or sneezing into your hands. Sneeze or cough in your elbow, staying home when sick and asymptomatic. And then they are suggesting that, um, you know, wearing that well-fitting, high-quality mask when in public indoor spaces. Again, that's not, we're, we're waiting on local guidance from the local health department. They communicated that, um, to the field. I think though certainly the first four, uh, precautions and steps that I've listed sort of help with the spread of viruses, whether it be respiratory or not. So that's the message we're going to communicate to families. Just good, quick reminders about, you know, when you're sick, stay home. Oh, stop the spread of whatever illness is floating on around. Any questions? Matt's the leadership board.
Thanks, Joe. Moving on to new business. Item A, resolved the Board of Education approve textbook adoption of YASN series by Saidee Faruki to be used in Kate, excuse me, grade two ELA classes for students to attach. Can I motion please? Jeff first. Second, Shelley. Any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes eight zero. Item B, resolved the Board of Education approve the bundle central school district policy, series three thousand, four thousand, six thousand, revised, reviewed pursuant to attach. Can I motion please? Shelley first?
Second.
Second, Tanya. Any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes eight zero. Item C, resolved the Board of Education authorize the OCMBOSIS technology lease resolution pursuant to attach. Can I motion please? Jeff first? Second, Denise. Any questions or discussion?
No, I just, just to add, I thank you, Joe, for following up. I posed a question, um, in the email and all forward that to Denise. I asked for clarification regarding additional costs for related borrower fees. Borrow, borrower, as fees incurred by OCMBOSIS and the cost of the yearly brick. And Joe provided, um, fees for the lease, which is five hundred dollars. A CNY project management fee of five percent of the lease amount. And then he also provided some cost for hardware insurance premium as well as a total contingency fee. So I'll send that. Thank you. And it's for six hundred and fifty Chrome, correct?
Yes. Uh, we are anticipating RJ spending this on six hundred and fifty, uh, Chrome devices. Yeah.
Thank you.
And just to clarify the lease, so we typically bring our lease for the previous year in the spring, like January, February timeframe. However, we only spent a portion of the funds. So this was already approved once by the board. And then when we went to spend the last part of it, they actually asked us to bring it back again for the financing purposes. So we'll be seeing another lease very soon is kind of why I bring this up for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year.
Thanks, Kim. Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Oh, uh, you messed me up. Uh, passes eight zero. All right, um, item D, resolved the Board of Education approve the district safety team for the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three school year. Can I motion please? Jeff first?
Second.
Second, Wayne? Any questions? I did have a conversation with Joe today regarding the shared decision-making plan. We looked into our policy fifty-six, thirty-two, um, that has to do with the district safety plan. All the people that were approving, we have not appointed people before for this committee. However, in our policy, it actually says we appoint the committee, but we have different people. We have additional, um, positions listed in our policy. So I'm not sure if we want to approve this or table this, look at it and fill all of them from the policy, which is different from the conversation we had earlier today.
So we wouldn't necessarily table it. We'd have to postpone it because tabling will just be until the end of the meeting.
Thank you, Post Tony.
My, uh, recommendation, Kim and I talked briefly, I think if we, we can always amend it just like we've, uh, done for other changes. So we think because we really should, this should have been done at the reorganization meeting. So if we approve it this evening, there are changes that we are looking to make. For example, um, at the time, and part of it was the rush to make sure that we're in compliance. Uh, you know, you'll see Rick Fotor is listed under the parent organization. We have a meeting with a joint PTA again, similar to what we did with the professional learning team membership. We had a conversation with them on our last joint meeting. We will do the same thing in January. I'm pretty confident that we can get other parent representation. And this was just a temporary, temporary fix for meeting the requirements, seeing that it really should have been done at the reorg meeting and not in December.
We keep working on this on a roll back in the day. We wouldn't do this until like November, have our public hearing. So we're moving in the right direction.
I think this is the last real group that we haven't, you know, finalized officially. So I, I, again, if you trust us.
Your recommendation is to approve this and then go back to policy fifty-six, thirty-two. Make sure we have all the different representatives in our policy listed there and bring those forward and redo this, kind of like we're doing with our own board committees.
Correct.
And I did get a question from someone today. How come I'm listed for the BOE member? And in the Friday letters, there's a call for, um, a board member to do this. And every year I email Kim and said, well, I'll do it if no one else comes forward and that's why I'm listed. So if someone asks if that's because I'm president, the answer is no. So we'll see another email probably going out for code of conduct eventually as well. And we already have strategic plan committee already set. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes eight zero. Item E, resolved the Board of Education approve the rate of pay for the non-contractual extra duty assignment of conductor, high school musical for the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three school year effective December fifth, two thousand twenty-two. Can I motion please?
Move.
Shelley first, Jeff second. Any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes eight zero. Item F, resolved the Board of Education approve the Board of Education revise standing committee assignments for two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three pursuant to attach. Can I motion please? Jeff first?
Second.
Second, Shelley? Any questions or discussion?
Just a quick comment.
Sure.
So the list that you, so you recognize it is, it's placed differently on the order. It's alphabetical. So from what you sent me, just so that you're aware of it, just to be transparent. Kristy was keeping track of this and so she just had these placed in alphabetical order based on the committee member.
Oh, okay.
So in case anybody noticed what was sent to all of you from Jen, it is a different order here, but it is the exact.
So the changes are, we're filling Frank's spot. So Sam's added to our policy committee and Denise is taking his slots on just abilities and technology.
Correct.
So thank you, everybody. And also thank you for the communications for people willing to, you know, give Denise committees and renew themselves in committees. I really, um, felt that exchange was really nice, trying to make sure it was balanced and people had opportunities. So I appreciate the flexibility there. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes eight zero. Next item, resolved the Board of Education accept the affidavit of collector unpaid property tax report as presented. Can I motion please? Jeff first?
Second.
Second, Wayne? Any questions or discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Passes eight zero. Item H, resolved the Board of Education approve the type-one action state environmental quality review. Speaker pursuant to attach. Can I motion please? Jeff first? Second, Matt? Any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes eight zero. We've now moved to the roundtable portion of the meeting. The only thing I have is just in the Friday letter last week, um, Joe had something in there. We talked about it briefly tonight, just to make sure you know this in there about a date for the data retreat and they chose January thirtieth. And if anyone has an issue with that or a conflict, to let him know. And then the other thing we saw, sent emails about future professional development, um, talking about boards' roles and responsibilities, which was an area on our board, um, self-evaluation last year, but also possibly meshing that with, um, the leadership team. So we understand each other's roles and responsibilities at different levels within the district as well. And I'm currently in the process of contacting, um, board members from other schools with professional development that they've had and also with NISB. So I'll give you more updates on that. But we do have, um, our next retreat already on the calendar since the beginning of the year of March thirteenth. So that's already on there. Maybe we can use, utilize that date. Does anyone have anything else? Moving on. Resolved the Board of Education enter into executive session to discuss collective negotiations pursuant to Taylor Law to discuss the VASPA contract and the employment history of a particular person or corporation or the medical, financial, or credit history of a particular person or corporation or matters leading to appointment, employment, promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal, removal of a particular person or corporation. Can I motion please? Shelley first, Jeff second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes eight zero. So we will go into the other room for executive session. So let's take about five minutes and then we'll be over there.